Hey, what's happening, all you dudes and dudettes? This is dudes talking freedom back at you once again. This is Luke and I'm here.
With Jeremy.
With Jeremy, and we want to thank you for joining us on the dudes talking freedom podcast. We're brought to you by Warriors for Freedom, a nonprofit that creates pathways to engage service members to help veterans and their families prevent suicide, foster camaraderie, and help them live their best lives. Check them out at warriorsforfreedom.org. All right, folks, we have Stephanie Elad, Elod in studio, who is a Frisco ISD trustee, and we'll be talking freedom, education, and whatever else we want to talk about. Let's get into it. Shall we?
Yeah, I'm gonna call you out for, we were just talking about the pronunciation of her last name.
I know.
And you did it right before, and then you did it wrong, but then you corrected yourself, but that's okay. Apologies.
I know, Stephanie, I've been calling you Stephanie Elad for the longest time. And then I watched that Glenn Beck interview, and he's calling you Stephanie Elod. And I'm just trying to rewire my brain, you know, and I've been on a crash course trying to rewire it. So I've been saying it as many times as I can.
It's okay.
Luke's notorious for messing people's names up on the intro.
This is the second time.
All right.
Just call me Stephanie.
Maybe the third.
Yeah.
There you go.
Well, thank you for joining us. We've, I know, we've had to reschedule a couple of times, but we're super psyched that we were able to get this together. And we have admired you and your work from afar, being a trustee on the board of Frisco ISD. And kind of in the thick of it, if you will, on a pretty ongoing basis. I think we met initially at the Amy Boots kind of campaign kickoff party.
That's right.
Back in January and talked about having you all on, and we had obviously Marvin Lo on a couple of weeks back to talk about some of the things that he's been dealing with as a trustee.
They're kind of like the dynamic duo of Frisco, though.
Yeah.
For sure.
That's the rumor, at least. That's what it sounds like. So your interview with Glenn Beck was great.
Thank you.
That, that was, if, if, if our listeners haven't seen or heard that, you can find it on YouTube. It's about 12 to 15 minutes or so, and they talk a lot about some of the recent shenanigans, let's say, with some of the other trustees on the board over there in Frisco. And some of the things that they're doing with respect to delaying votes and just kind of playing some gamesmanship with certain things that you guys are looking to do or looking to institute over there in Frisco ISD. So I would urge everyone to go check that out. But let's talk about a little bit, let's get started talking a little bit about how you got involved in the, in the ISD and yourself. Now, you're from California originally.
I am.
And how long ago did you move to Texas?
10 years.
Okay, so 10 years. All right, so.
Yeah, so you're a northerner or you're Southern Californian?
I grew up in Southern California, Orange County, and then lived in San Diego for quite a while, went to school there and lived there quite a while before moving here. And we moved here for a job opportunity for me. The company that I was working for at the time had promoted me to move out here. And my husband was able to transfer with the job that he was at. And so I had never been to the Dallas area when I decided to accept the job.
Did you think we all rode horses and?
I didn't think that. My husband grew up in Oklahoma, though. A good portion of his childhood was in Tulsa, so he'd spent quite a bit of time in Dallas. And he said, you'll like it, we'll be good. And we'd been looking to leave California. We had kind of seen where it was going. And we have two kids. Our oldest was in third grade at the time. We decided to move here and our youngest hadn't started kindergarten yet. She was just two years old. So I decided to, we decided to move here and I'd never been here, but he said I would like it and he was right. And then we started, you know, looking for a place to live. And everywhere we went, we heard that Frisco ISD was the best school system in North Texas. And so we said, well, you know, we want the best for our kids, so let's move to Frisco. So we told the realtor, find a house in Frisco ISD boundaries. And so she did. And we bought it. And the first few years, it was amazing. I mean, my older daughter was behind in school. Like she was, she was a good student in California, but she came here, but because the standards and the teaching was so much better, standards were higher and the teaching was better, that she was behind and she needed tutoring for six months to catch up. And the school did that. And they, they actually, the teacher was funny, because when the teacher offered the tutoring, she said, you know, we see this a lot from the kids from California. They're behind. So it was, she had math tutoring for six months and then she was fully caught up and did well in math after that. But the first, you know, three years or so, we thought it was amazing. We couldn't believe our luck. We thought we had landed in the best school system in America. We were so happy, so thrilled. And then started to notice some things as my older one got older and I didn't know, is it just middle school? You know, what, what's sort of happening? And then my younger one came up, you know, through the ranks and started kindergarten. And we just noticed it wasn't the same experience, that there had been a relaxation of standards, that the teaching seemed to be not as, I guess the curriculum had changed really is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
And there was all these things. And then COVID happened. And, you know, just like with everyone, I think we just noticed, like, what, what is going on? What are they teaching? What is happening?
Yeah.
Because my kids were home for a few months.
Yeah.
The first few months of COVID, and they were doing this online teaching, and neither of my kids adapted to that very well. They didn't do well with online teaching. So thank goodness Frisco ISD did allow an in-person option that fall. But what happened was in the spring of 2021, so just over two years ago, I went to a school board meeting because I heard that there was going to be a bunch of parents there asking to make the masks optional. At this point, the kids had been back at school for almost a full school year. Masks were required. Both my kids were kind of suffering with the mask. One of mine has asthma, another one has allergies and having headaches all the time.
Was it all elementary in Frisco? Because I think it was fourth grade and up here in Prosper.
With masks?
Yeah, masking.
It was, I think it was everyone.
Was it really?
My younger one was in third grade at the time, and my oldest one was in high school.
Okay, my youngest, yeah, I think you're right, like elementary, actually, no, because my oldest at the time was in fifth grade, and he was required to wear a mask all day, and he would get reprimanded for taking it off. And then.
Third and below in Prosper.
Third and below.
You didn't have to wear one.
No, because yeah, you're right. My youngest was in kindergarten at the time, and he did not have to wear one. Right, yeah.
I thought it was everyone in Frisco, but my youngest might have been fourth grade. So, so yeah. She had, both my kids had to wear them. So, and they were getting sick of them. So I heard there was going to be a bunch of parents that were going to the school board meeting to talk about that. And I thought, well, I'm going to go to that. I think it was the second school board meeting I had ever attended. And I was sitting in the audience and there was a lot of people there talking about masks, talking about whatever. But before we even got to public comment, the president of the board at the time was trying to quiet down the, the folks in the crowd. And he said, in kind of a stern way, this is our meeting, sort of like, be quiet, this is our meeting.
This is the president of the school board?
This is the president of the school board at the time, meaning their meeting and not the people's meeting. And I thought, well, wait a minute. What do you mean it's your meeting? Like, I thought it was everyone's meeting. Is it, it's a public meeting for the public, you know, parents, community members, et cetera? So you know how you just have those moments in your life where something just fundamentally shifts in your mind? That is what happened to me. I'm sitting there between the time he said it, and he said it two or three times. Between the time he said it and the time it was my turn to speak was probably about 45 minutes, give or take, right? And so I just started thinking, like, do I talk about masks or do I talk about what he just said? Like, what do I do? It was kind of this mental ping pong game I was playing in my head.
Yeah.
And I finally just decided, okay, what would, what, what should I do? Like, what would a brave person do? Right? And so I thought, I'm just going to be brave and I'm just going to call this guy out, because other people had talked about the masks very eloquently.
Sure.
I didn't really have anything to add, but I was just really put off by what he said. And there wasn't any kind of correction, like, I didn't mean to say that. It really is everyone's meeting. Maybe we all misspeak, right? We all sometimes say things.
Sure.
But when you double down on it and triple down on it.
He said it three times. So I just thought, you know what? I'm going to talk about that. I don't have anything to add to the mask thing. Other people have covered that. So I got up and I said, you know, earlier, it was said that this is your meeting, but I think it's our meeting. I think it's the people's meeting. I think it's the community's meeting, and I think it's really disrespectful to, to say that. You know, I've been sitting here two to three hours waiting for my two minutes to speak, and I don't think it's okay to address people who've been sitting here all night trying to be part of their community like that. So I said something like that, kind of a polite rant.
Right.
And so I, I finished, and then I turned around and I had a standing ovation in the room. All these strangers are clapping for me. And I thought, well, this is fun, you know, I should do this more often, right? So I go and I sit down and I wait until the end of the meeting, listen to the rest of the comments, and I got home and my husband's like, where were you? I said, I've told you I was going to the school board meeting. He said, yeah, but I'd been gone like four hours at that point or whatever it was, right?
They tend to go long.
Yeah, I just said, it was a really long meeting. And he said, wow. And so that was it. I went back to my life. I thought, I'm glad I, I'm glad I stood up and spoke up, but now I'm going to just like go back to my real life. Well, it wasn't maybe a couple of days later that my phone blew up and people were saying, you go, girl, you rock, good for you. And I'm like, what are you, what are you talking about? I didn't know what they were talking about. So finally, I asked one of them, you know, thanks for the compliment. What, what are you referring to specifically?
Right.
And there was this one woman that I know who doesn't even live anywhere near her. She lives in Tyler, who I happen to know, who was like, you go, girl, you know, good for you. So I'm like, what are you talking about? And she said, she said, you don't know? I said, no, I, I don't know. Well, apparently there had been a reporter from the Texas Scorecard, either watching it live or watching the recording, I don't know, but did an article about it and included the video of what he had said about this is our meeting and then included my speech. And so that was what people were texting me about. And so people started saying, you should run for school board. And I thought to myself, okay, I thought, that's very flattering. Thank you. But I'm going to find someone to run for school board, because someone should run. I didn't think it was going to be me. But I said, someone should run. You are right. And I'm going to find that person and I'm going to support them. And I'm going to help them run and I'm going to help them win. So that was my mission, is I was trying to find someone. And basically, I, you know, it ended up being me.
All along, you were sitting right there in front of you.
Someone said to me, they said, if, you know, that quote, if not me, who? If not now, when?
Right.
And when I've told people I was trying to find someone to run for Frisco ISD, someone said that to me, and it just kind of hit me in the heart, like, maybe it is supposed to be me. Maybe, you know, what I've been doing my whole life and my background has prepared me to do this. And so I did it. I didn't know what I was doing.
Most people don't when they run for school board.
Yeah, I just did what seemed logical to me. And I just saw an opportunity based on the way that parents were addressed in this meeting, that, that there needed to be a voice, because there's seven board members. No one else said anything, like, I think this is everyone's meeting. I mean, no one said anything. So I thought, well, I'm going to be the voice of the parents, because I felt like they needed it.
The people, yeah. And then Tasby, right this year, even on their website, they've doubled down and said that it's not you guys, it's us, you know, it's, it's the district school board. We're serving the district. We're not serving the voters.
Yeah, that's apparently not new. Apparently that's been there for a long time.
Has it really?
I didn't know it was there. I had my issues with Tasby. I sort of ran an anti-Tasby platform to some degree, because as I was running, I heard of this concept called team of eight. Have you guys heard of team of eight?
No, I haven't.
Yeah, so team of eight is you have seven trustees plus a superintendent, and you're supposed to be a team and kind of walk in lockstep and, you know, and, and that made no sense to me.
Yeah, therein lies the problem right there.
Right. It was counterintuitive to me from the beginning, because I thought, well, how does that help facilitate and promote disagreement? Which I think is fine. I think it's fine if you have seven people that don't all agree. In fact, I think that is preferred.
It's good, yeah.
Because I think that helps you get to a better outcome. And, and what I had seen, I started attending more board meetings in the middle of all this, and I watched some old ones, and I'm, they voted 7-0 every single time. I don't think that's healthy, no matter what. I mean, sometimes, you know, certain things, yeah. But if you're voting 7-0 all the time, then you're missing out on some opportunity for dissent, which I think is healthy and helps get a better outcome.
On diversity.
Right.
You're missing out on some diversity, which is funny.
Diversity of thought, right?
Because the DEI, I mean, that's what it's all about, right? It's having some diverse thought on the group that's, the think tank really is what you are, right? This group of seven is a group that all shares thoughts and ideas in order to form a more perfect union.
Yeah, it's pretty ironic that they, they promote the diverse views, the diversity, you know, in concepts and thought. And then they generally, what I've seen from school boards is that they kind of all flow and they march to the same drum, you know, and here, in here in Prosper, they did the same thing. Like Garrett, like won by 15, 18 votes. And like, it was like, it's like Donald Trump, like, he wasn't supposed to win, you know, like Garrett wasn't supposed to win, but he won. And every vote goes 6-1, like every vote goes 6-1. And the other six, it's like the gang of seven, right? It's like the, you know, the team of seven, because you get the superintendent, the other six, and then Garrett's always like swimming upstream, and it's tough.
It is tough. It is tough. And I've seen people too that sort of run on this platform, that similar to how Garrett and I, because Garrett and I ran at the same time. That's how I met him and got to know him, you know, kind of ran as this independent voice platform. But once you get in there, I've seen people run on that platform, and then they, they turn immediately. And listen, I don't vote no just to be difficult or obstinate, right? I would never do that.
Without your conscience.
Be contrarian about it for fun. But I certainly, there's a lot of times where I felt like, you know, not so much pressure, although it kind of is pressure to like go with the flow. And it's like, why are you asking questions? Why are you voting this way? Why didn't you do this? Why didn't you do that? It's like, I'm sorry, I, I work for the people. I don't work for the district.
Right.
I work for the people, and I'm not going to forget that. And for as long as I sit in the seat, whether that's two more years or longer, I'm going to try my best to represent the people who don't have a voice, because I saw it when I was a parent. It's like, nobody wants to hear what I have to say if I don't agree. And you see that with, you know, the parents that, and the community members that agree. Those people are celebrated, and the ones that have a different opinion sometimes are shamed and gassed a little, a little bit. And I've seen that in many districts.
They trash you, they treat your kids differently, you know, I mean, they do that.
I've never had that. I had a parent actually call me today and was concerned about speaking out and said, I'm worried about retaliation for my kids. And I said, I, I've spoken out just about as much as anybody in Frisco, and I have never once felt like my, either of my kids have been treated differently. I've had issues with certain things that occurred at my kids' schools, and I've spoken about that, but I don't think that it was directed at my kids.
I could see where it'd be a concern though of parents who, who do speak out, because cancel culture is a thing. And, you know, it's that, that level of, or that stigma that people have. And he, you know, I've, I've been a, I wouldn't say a victim, but I had some choice things to say about the education system as a whole on Facebook not too long ago. And I had a few teachers like come after me a little bit, you know, in, in a Facebook group of, of administrators and teachers. And they had something, choice things to say about us, the podcast, and, and, you know, what we were doing and people we were interviewing. And, you know, look, like, we're equal opportunity interviewers. I mean, we'll, we'll bring anybody on, and anybody's welcome to come on.
We'll literally interview anybody.
We will literally interview anyone.
Does that make you feel special?
Not really.
No, but I mean, like, we, we, we seek out people we want to, we want to talk to. And then we have an open invite to, to anyone who wants to come on and say their piece. And, and we'll talk to anybody who, who has something valuable to say. And I had a concern that, look, like, you, you, you call out me, my name, you know, where, you know, you, you make an indication of like where my kids go to school in Prosper, what school they go to.
That's rough.
And so that's like, kind of like in the back of your head, you're thinking to yourself, and so I can understand where these parents might be coming from. It's like, well, if the teacher knows that I'm a parent of a child that goes to this elementary school or this middle school, and they make a post to that effect in a Facebook group, private Facebook group for a bunch of teachers and administrators, you would think, like, if I was a teacher at said school, I might think, huh, I wonder if that person's in my, you know, has a, that child is in my class. And, you know, maybe I disagree with that podcast's point of view, or maybe I disagree with that individual's point of view. And I don't like that individual because of what they said. And so then they could potentially have a bias against the child, you know, and.
It may be more likely to follow up on that.
Yeah, it's called unconscious bias. I mean, it's a thing, you know, and it happens in business. If you don't think, if, if it happens in business and you don't think it could happen in a school system, then you're crazy, because it absolutely could.
Well, luckily or unluckily, most of these teachers are so overworked that they don't want to mess with any of that stuff when they get home. They're just shutting it down, right?
Well, and I hear, and I, I did start to hear from teachers when I was running, and I still hear from them now, you know, they don't, they can't speak up. So the teachers that agree with everything that's going on can, can speak, and the ones who don't, don't feel like they can.
Right.
So, I mean, that happens in corporate America too. That happens a lot of other places. But it's just unfortunate to me. And I think the thing that bothers me about it the most is that if you don't agree, you are anti-public education.
Yeah.
It's like, okay, and even with this whole voucher debate, which I don't necessarily want to get into that tonight. But it's like, if you don't agree that all vouchers are bad and evil and should be banned from the state of Texas, then you are anti-public education. Well, it's on the governor's priorities. And he even came out with a statement recently, just saying if you, I'm paraphrasing, but it was something to the effect of, if you don't get it done, legislature in your session, then like, we're going to have a special session. Because that's how important it is to me. And he ran on that.
Yeah.
He talked about that when he was running. He won. Now, I'm not, you know, I don't, people ask about my thoughts about vouchers, and I don't really get into it, because I feel like as a trustee, my job is to make sure that Frisco ISD is the, is the school system of choice for most people, and it's as, as good as it can be. So I don't comment about my personal opinion about vouchers, pro or con. And it sounds like some of these bills are kind of complex, and there's some good pieces of it and some bad pieces. But what I will say is that, that doesn't mean that you are anti-public education, because you don't agree with that or anything else. And I find that argument just to be really ridiculous. And, and that's where we're just like name calling, right?
Yeah.
And people would say that about me when I was running, that I was anti-public education. I was educated K through master's degree in public schools and universities. And my kids have been in public school both since kindergarten. And one of them's, my oldest one's a freshman at Texas Tech, which I'm pretty sure is a public university here in Texas.
Yes.
So how am I anti, and I sit on a school board.
Right.
But I'm anti-public education. It's just, it's ridiculous.
Doesn't make a lot of sense.
Yeah, it's just ridiculous.
Yeah, you're just not part of the cabal think tank.
I am not part of the cabal. That is probably a very accurate statement about me.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I don't know.
Now, with the vouchers, you're referring to the school choice stuff.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's a topic.
That was going to be my next question. I'm just kidding.
Well, I mean, it's interesting.
It's a complicated topic. And people have asked my opinion about the bills that are in the legislature right now, and I honestly don't feel knowledgeable enough to, to talk about them, because they're pretty complex.
Oh, yeah.
And apparently it's, you know, they're quite, there's quite a bit to it. And so I, I followed it very peripherally. I mean, there's so many bills. So I figure I'm just going to kind of wait and see what passes. I did go down and testify on one bill this session, because I was asked to by one of our state reps. So I got pretty knowledgeable about that. And the district, Frisco ISD, actually does a really great job keeping us up to date and keeping the community up to date on the status of the bills. So.
What bill was that?
It was HB 900. It was the, the library book, sponsored by Jared Patterson.
Jared Patterson.
Yeah. So he asked me to come down and speak on that, so I did.
That just seems like, that was a no brainer, right? And they pretty mu, they passed that.
It's passed. I think it's just waiting for the governor's signature. And it's hard to keep track of all these bills and where they go and what happens.
And the process too is very confusing. It's not just, I mean, like, yeah, like legislation is a complex thing from, from start to finish. And it's also different at the state level than it is in Congress. And it's almost like you have all these different sessions and committees, you know, that are, that are evaluating things. And whereas in, in Congress, it's, it's a lot cleaner process, it's on, it seems like.
I'm sure somebody would come in here and disagree with you and tell you how easy it was.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure they would.
No, it's simple.
Yeah, it's absolutely, it's easy. But it's not. It's, and there's 700, I think there's 700 school related. We had Janelle Davis and Eileen.
Aileen.
Aileen, that's right. Now, see, now I'm doing it. I'm screwing up names.
Oh, yeah.
Aileen Wacowski was on, and they talked a lot about the, you know, some of the stuff they're doing down in Austin from an activist and a legal perspective. And they talked about HB 900 and Jared and, you know, they, they explained the process to us a little bit on that show. And I was like, I didn't even realize that our legislative session only took place once every two years for six months.
Yes, that I knew.
Yeah, I had no idea. Like, I thought it was just like a regular, you know, ongoing.
All the time, passing bills, yeah.
Running guns, six months every two years.
Yeah, and it's like 700 school related bills, like something like 2,000 or 3,000 total bills or something that are, that are coming through the meat grinder.
And then one gets passed. And fun fact, Jared Patterson is a Frisco ISD parent. His kids are in Frisco ISD schools.
Oh, yeah, I did. I heard that. Yeah, he was at that, at that Amy Boots kickoff party as well.
Yeah, he was, yeah. Yeah, he was kind of the headliner, right?
Yes, he was. Aside from Amy, of course. But he's a Frisco ISD parent, so he's got three kids in the schools.
Jared, if you're listening, we'd love to have you on the show.
Yeah.
It'd be great.
Definitely.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, and you'll be able to keep that seat that you have, you know, if we could get more people out to vote. I think that's one of, that's some, one of the most discouraging things about these local elections that I see. And it's not just North Texas.
Low turnout.
It's all over the place. Like, I know people in all sorts of other states, they have kind of the same type of turnout. It's around 3%. You know, that's what it is here, roughly, 3% to 5%. And that number should be way higher.
Yeah.
I mean, in Singapore, their elections, they have 95% participation rate.
Do they really? Do they make you vote?
I know, right? I don't know, maybe.
Gun to your head. Who are you voting for?
I mean, I looked at a big list to like, it could be. I don't know. I mean, there's a huge list of the participation rates out there that I was looking at.
Yeah, it's low. It's low.
It's super low here, like, you know, unexplainably low. And it just made me think that maybe, because you mentioned that, you know, let's go to, let's move to Frisco ISD, because it's the best school system, because you looked at the rankings. Well, why don't we start ranking the participation rates with the voting, you know, like, where are the top 10 places where people are voting in their local elections? And that is probably a good barometer of, you know, how great of a community you're moving to.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that could become a metric.
For the longest time, I think I voted for the first time in 2019, because I knew one of the people who was running for reelection. So I think that was the first time I voted, because I didn't know who to vote for. And honestly, I thought, these schools are great. Everyone says how great they are.
Yeah.
I was having a pretty good experience. I figured, you know, these people.
We were all brainwashed, Stephanie.
The wheels rolling, why change it to a square?
But then when I started to see stuff, I thought, well, wait a minute, we need, we need some change. We need some diversity of thought, as you mentioned. And we need, you know, I think some different independent ideas. So I had to have that awakening at that school board meeting when, you know, the gentleman said, this is our meeting. And I ran for his seat, by the way. Kind of makes the story.
Oh, nice.
I ran for his seat. He didn't run. He decided not to run. But I did run for his seat, and I now sit in place three, which was his, his seat for
Awesome.
Several terms.
Yeah.
And he decided not to run anymore for any reason in particular? You don't know?
I don't know. I don't know. He didn't say. He just said it was time for him to move on.
Interesting. I was, I'm always curious why people will, why people step down and relinquish the control that they have after so many terms.
Well, I think he knew I was running for his seat. I hadn't announced, but it was, there was only one open seat. And so that's why I picked that seat. And also, I thought it was kind of a good story to run. I wanted to run against him. I really did. I wanted to run against him. Then he didn't run. I hadn't announced, though, when he decided not to.
Rumor has it, Stephanie calls him out, calls him out on the lawn.
Yeah.
Throws down the gloves.
Well, you know, I don't think he, you know, that, that clip went kind of viral.
Yeah.
And it had his name and his face. I don't think he wanted that level of, you know,
Heat.
B-level fame. Like, it wasn't A-level fame. It was, you know, B-minus level fame, right? I don't think he wanted that. I did end up reaching out to him, actually, after that was all over. I sent him an email and I said, hi, I'm the one that called you out. And I'd be happy to, you know, have a conversation with you. And to his credit, he did call me. But no one ever apologized. And I felt like when you say something like that, you should apologize. Like, I didn't mean it. It really is our meeting. I misspoke. I wouldn't want to give the impression that public isn't welcome. There was none of that. It was a pleasant conversation that we had, but not that he owed necessarily me, Stephanie, an apology, but I felt like he owed the community an apology for that.
Well, you're a representative of the community, especially then, because you'd been elected. So it would have been perfectly.
Well, now I am, but at the time, I talked to him. Yeah, I was, I just, it happened, it blew up. I thought, well, let me reach out to him and have a conversation with him. I'm sure he didn't enjoy that whole
Yeah.
process. But we had a pleasant conversation, but I didn't feel like he really got my point afterwards.
He probably didn't.
I don't think he did.
And people generally don't like to apologize if they don't think that they're wrong. And that's, you know, like, you, you, you have to under, you have to, you have to understand that what you did was wrong for you to even consider an apology. And then you actually have to man up or woman up and give the apology, right? Everyone can just take a reservation, but you have to hold the reservation.
Well, and it's funny too, because when I tell the story, you know, you can sort of tell people, like, when I say, oh, and the president said, this is our meeting. Like, a lot of people go, wait, what? He said what? And then some people, it's like, just goes right by them. Like, a lot of people go, wait, what? He said what? And then some people, it's like, just goes right by them because they don't, they don't think it's an issue. So you can kind of tell who's sort of like that team of hate mentality and who's not, just when I say that one thing.
It's like the library books, like, right? People think that there's a problem with some of the content in some of the books. But then there's a whole bunch of people that are like, what are you talking about? There's no issue with this. And it's fine.
They call you book burners.
Everything is fine. It's okay.
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Because we had to vote on, I think it was five books or seven books. I can't remember. It's been a little while. But the board actually had to vote on books because they were challenged all the way up to that level by Jared Patterson. Actually, he filed complaints against like twenty-nine books or something. And then some got taken out on level one. Some got taken out on level two. And then level three was board vote. I think it was seven books. And we've, the board voted to remove five of them, if I'm recalling correctly. It's been a few months.
The fact that, that the books that are in question have to get through three rounds to get, like, that's wild to me.
It's like American Idol or something, huh?
It's, it's nuts. It's nuts. I can't believe, like.
Is that show still around on?
Yeah, oh, yeah. It's still going on. Yeah, it's still going on. They got a million of those, like America's Got Talent, The Voice. It's like reality show, you know?
Overload.
Overload. Um, they should do school board reality shows.
Yeah.
They should.
Cool. That would be cool. Maybe we should start.
I mean, Alex Stein almost made it a reality show. I think he's come the closest.
He has never shown up in Frisco ISD, but he has been to the Frisco City Council meetings, I think, twice, if I recall correctly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I keep waiting for him to show up in Frisco ISD.
He was gonna run. Didn't he run for school board in Dallas or something?
In Highland Park. He did not win. I just looked it up the other day because I thought, I wonder if he ran, if he won. He did not. He did not do well.
Uh, uh, well, I think he probably just like, put his name in.
And did a few videos about it. I don't know if he went to any forums or anything like that.
Campaigning.
We offered to have him on. He didn't respond.
No, we didn't. We wanted to interview him too, but.
He's busy producing content, you know, and working on his rap career.
He's also, he's also, I think, isn't he, uh, isn't he like on, didn't he?
The Blaze.
Isn't he on The Blaze now too with Glenn Beck?
I don't know.
I think he got picked up, uh, from the, by The Blaze. I think he's part of that affiliation now.
Sounds right.
Yeah. He definitely has like a studio and like a legit.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah. Setup, um, unlike us here in my garage.
This is legit.
It's legit.
Very legit. I like it.
I do too.
It's homey. It's cozy. Um, so, yeah, I like it here. Um, so the, so the interview you did with Glenn Beck was about, uh, let's talk a little bit about those shenanigans. Because like we hear, uh, stories from all over the country. And a friend of mine was involved in Connecticut during the whole like FBI targeting of parents when they were, you know, calling out certain shenanigans up there in, in Connecticut. Um, and she's been on the show a couple of times and, uh, and kind of told us, like, early on, like a couple, February of last year, I think.
Yeah.
Was when we first had her on. And she's like, look, you guys are Texas, but like, it's coming. If, if it's not already there, it's probably already there, but if it's not, it's coming. And you guys are gonna be dealing with this. And here's what you need to look for and that kind of thing. And then, you know, the book thing starts happening and, you know, parents start waking up and, you know, through COVID and realizing, okay, well, this is kind of like, let me, let me better understand some of the curriculum, what's going on in the schools, talking to their kids more, taking more of an active parenting role with their children, which I'm a huge proponent of. And I preach that all the time. Like, you have to talk to your kids. You can't just abdicate to the teachers and to the schools, like the rearing of your child. It is your responsibility as a parent to, to bring up your child. And you cannot just let the, the school system do that because they, to no fault of the teachers, the school system will fail your child in parenting. And it, that's not their job to parent your child. And so, um, when, when you bring something to the table, right? Can you step us through like what that process is like first? And then how this all went down? Because I mean, they're, they're talking about kicking the can down the road, scheduling, you know, some of these sessions during the middle of the day. So no one can show up for, you know, to hear it, you know, that kind of thing. So can you kind of step us through how the whole process flows?
So the way it works in Frisco, I don't know how it works in Prosper, but I think it's similar. I'm not sure. But the way it works in Frisco is it takes two trustees to put an item on the agenda.
That's the same here.
For just a discussion item or a vote. And I actually tried to get it so that it was one trustee um, this year, and it got voted down. Because I feel like there's only seven trustees.
Yeah.
Right? Like, I feel like any one of us seven should be able to put something on the agenda. But, but that vote lost. Totally un, unrelated to this particular issue. But what had happened was is that Marvin and I had put an item on the agenda um, related to bathroom policy. And it was very contentious. I didn't, I think I underestimated how contentious it would be. Because basically the district didn't have a policy and we just wanted them to have one. Um, so, you know, we were brand new to the board. So I don't know how things work still. I just feel like we need to do this and I'm sworn in. So, you know, let's go, right? About what, you know, if I wait six months to do anything, then it's only a three-year term, right? So I just jumped right in with both feet.
Why not?
Uh, yeah, that's what I thought. So we put it on the agenda and, um, it kind of became this whole thing. But it ended up passing seven zero, which is kind of the interesting part is all the trustees voted for it. It wasn't, it's not like it failed. And Marvin and I were the only ones. Every single trustee voted for it. And it was very, you know, simply worded policy. But either which way.
And what was the policy?
It was basically, boys use boys restrooms, girls use girls restrooms and locker rooms.
Okay.
That was basically it.
Okay.
In a nutshell. It's a little more complex than that, but I don't know that we need all that detail. But what had happened was, um, there were some community members who were very upset about that. And they wanted, you know, the students who identify with a different gender than the one they were born with to have more freedom with the restrooms, I guess. And they were upset about the vote.
Right.
So they were upset. And so three of our board members, who also happened to be our three board officers, met with these upset constituents about the bathroom policy that had been passed. So, um, what happened in the meeting was that the board officers were saying things like, you know, we can slow walk their items. We did slow walk this. They wanted to vote on it in July and we pushed it to November, which is a violation of our board operating procedures, which basically says that when two trustees request something, it's got to be heard or voted on, right? Within sixty days. So.
So impeachment?
November. Yeah, no, there's no.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Impeachment is not, there's no remedy for a board member unless a board member commits a felony.
The rules and.
Can't do anything.
Kind of like telling my three-year-old that, uh, did something wrong.
Pretty much. Yeah. So.
Yeah.
So there's no impeachment or removal process for trustees. So, um, now you can censure a trustee, but that doesn't do anything either.
Okay.
It's just like basically, you know, you did something wrong and we all, we have enough votes to say you did something wrong.
Slap on the wrist and then it'd be on your way.
So anyways, there was just some, some things in the meeting, just kind of placating. And oh, if, if Marvin and Stephanie ask for this again, we're gonna put it on an agenda in the middle of the day when no one can come. So it was stuff like that that was said on the video. So, or in the meeting.
Right.
And apparently someone had recorded the meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so there was an article done by a local.
Well, the Gateway Pundit picked it up.
The Gateway Pundit picked it up, but they didn't break it.
Was it Scorecard?
But it was, was it Texas?
No, it was actually an organ, uh, um, publication called Current Revolt. It's like a blog. It's like a blog. They have a site. And they do a lot of like government official stuff.
Yeah, like a Project Veritas type thing.
Who's having an affair? Who's, you know, saying stuff at, to parents and things like that. So they do a lot of that kind of stuff.
Inquiring minds wanting to.
In sort of Texas. But they, they do, they do a lot of Frisco stories in McKinney. And I'm sure they covered Prosper too. So, so they're the ones who broke it. Yeah, the Gateway Pundit picked it up. Texas Scorecard picked it up. Other media outlets picked it up. So I found out about it when it was released. And so I listened. So there's the short, you know, kind of edited version of sort of the most concerning comments, I'll say. But I, the Current Revolt also gave a link to the entire fifty-minute thing. And I listened to it. I listened to the whole thing. Uh, but that was how I found out about it. And so I made a public statement about it. I sort of waited a couple of weeks. I'm, I don't usually, I'm not usually the first one to respond or comment on things. I usually like to be thoughtful and digest it. So it was at least a couple of weeks, I think, before I made a statement. And then I did make a statement that I was disappointed. But honestly, one of the things that I was most disappointed about, in addition to breaking our own rules about these things, was the referring, um, the way that parents were referred to as the hate crowd. That's what bothered me the most about the whole thing. Because the parents were referred to as haters, the hate crowd. You know, we can't let the hate crowd come back and wreck the meetings and do this and that. And, you know, I was at the meetings. I sat through hours of public comment on this topic.
Yeah.
And there were people on both sides, right, who had things to say. Some of them said them more eloquently than others. But I didn't think that any of the parents were haters. And they were talking about the ones who were, you know, concerned about this bathroom usage issue. I didn't think they were haters. I just thought they were parents who were concerned. And it was being presented in this meeting as if, you know, these parents hate these transgender kids. And I didn't, that is not what these parents were doing.
No.
They were concerned about their children's experience, their modesty, their safety. And so that was what bothered me the most, is calling them the haters. You know, people say lots of stuff about me all the time. If you have a thin skin, do not run for your local school board.
I was gonna say, you gotta have pretty thick skin to be running for school board in any of these big cities.
By the day, right?
It sets a terrible precedent too.
They call that calloused. Yeah.
I mean, first it's just the kids that identify as boys that are girls or whatever, you know, transgender kids. But then it, it escalates from there. Next thing you know, you have, you know, transgender adults coming into school bathrooms, you know, and all sorts of other stuff.
Yeah.
You know, I mean.
Well, I just know, what I know is that the parents who came were concerned. And they weren't angry and they weren't bigoted. They just were concerned. And so to just dismiss their concerns by calling them haters is disingenuous.
Yeah.
And, and that's, you know, I disagree with people all the time, but I try not to call them haters or other names because A, it's not productive and B, it's just disrespectful. Like, and I've, I've talked to parents who disagree with me vehemently on this and other issues. And it's like, I get your point. I understand your point. I just have a different perspective. And I, if we could have conversations like that, it's fine.
Yeah.
But calling people the hate crowd, I'm not okay with it because, and then the board all voted for it. So it's like, it just made no sense.
It doesn't. Sometimes you just need to agree to disagree. And it doesn't sound like, like, yeah, and you vote. And, and you abide by the vote, right? Because that's democracy. And that's the system that's been put in place, good, bad or indifferent. If you don't like it, vote some different people in to affect change. But when it's a seven O swing, you know, it's kind of tough to like beat that, right? You, you know, so, uh, there's really not a whole lot to complain about. And, and you're either, as a, if you're a parent that has the concern about the hate crowd, like, maybe you should be talking to, you know, and it, well, it sounds like they went and they talked to these three officers, uh, at the, at this coffee shop where they, this video was taken. Um, and they, it's almo, it almost sounded like the officers kind of, um, like catered to the, to these parents though. Like they, like, because if they were part of that seven O vote, you know, it's almost like they're making like excuses or, you know, trying to like quell their concerns.
I think that's the thing is this perspective, right? Like, it's not, the message wasn't being said to the public. It was being said to the dissenters, essentially, placating them.
The sense that I got, I don't know, because I wasn't there and I can only go by the video. But the sense that I got was that the, the board members were meeting with these folks in an effort to kind of placate them because they were upset at how they had voted. Because we got emails, right, from people who were like, I think we even got a few that was like, I expected this from Marvin and Stephanie, but I don't expect it from the rest of you, kind of a thing. And so I think that the vote caused them to have to explain maybe a little bit. I don't know. I'm speculating. I don't, I don't know. I wasn't there, but.
Seems like it.
Yeah.
That's what my sense is, that that was the purpose of the meeting, is they were upset. So I think it was kind of like, okay, well, we're not gonna let them put it on the agenda anymore. And we slow walked it the best we could. And, you know, that kind of stuff. But I don't, I don't really know for sure.
Yeah. It's tough to speculate. There's a, there's a big push, uh, to dissent and cause strife at these, in these school boards across the country. Um, I mean, we see it here because we're in Texas and we are all living it on a pretty regular basis. But, you know, you see the videos online. You see the parents going up and having their, you know, saying their piece in the two minutes that they get and talking about, you know, their perspectives, right, their concerns. And they, they get hate. They get, you know, if you're, who, these parents are haters of the parents that they're calling haters. I mean, the irony is so thick. It's like, if you're calling these other parents haters, then you clearly are hating on them, you know? Like, you just, look, you just have a different perspective. Everyone has a different perspective. It's what makes the world go round. And you can sit there and you can cry about it, or you can just abide by the vote and say like, okay, this is the policy. Like, I have a, let's say, you know, someone who has a transgender child. And it's like, listen, Johnny, you're gonna have to use the boys bathroom, even if you think you're a girl.
Or the nurse's bathroom.
Or go to the nurses. Yeah, or whatever. Yeah. Or, you know, when Susan Kershaw was on, we had her on a little while ago and it's too bad she lost. But she, she was saying like, maybe we just, whereas we're building these new schools, maybe we have a, you know, a third bathroom option, like a family bathroom at Target or whatever, where anybody can go, and anyone can go in to use that bathroom.
For the people that identify as babies?
The people that identify.
The changing table?
Yeah, right. Exactly. Yes. There are, there are people that identify as babies. I have seen some of those crazy videos online. It's just adults that identifies babies. They dress like babies. They sleep in cribs. It's, it's wild.
Right, yeah. So I don't know. It's too bad Susan lost, uh, Reed Bond lost, uh, a lot.
Yeah, they both got more votes than I did by a lot.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so bigger turnout.
A lot higher. They both got several thousand more votes than I did.
Several thousand? Really?
Susan had ten thousand almost.
Right. I got seventy-six hundred votes when I won.
Okay.
And, um, they both got over ten thousand votes.
Okay.
So turnout was much higher.
So we're getting there. We're just not getting all the way there.
Yeah. I mean, I, when I saw the numbers, I was like, wow. And my husband even said, that's way more votes than you got. I said, I know. But when I ran last year, it was only two school board races on the ballot. There are just, this time we had mayor, a city council race, a contested and an uncontested city council race, some propositions. So.
Yeah, here.
And the mayor's race was contested and it got, you know, a little heated.
Okay.
Um, so it was the former fire chief of Frisco running against the current mayor of Frisco. So there was a little bit of stuff going on with that. So I think that, I think we just got.
Increases participation.
Increased participation.
I mean, if you get the primary, you know, President of the United States is being determined on that ballot, you're gonna get a lot more votes.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there's, um, yeah, definitely more people show up for it. Um, the, that's the biggest, I think, drawback to municipal voting. You, you had mentioned earlier, first time you voted was in two thousand nineteen. We moved here in two thousand nineteen. You know, my kids were still pretty young at the time. I think like fourth grade and below. And so we were just starting to pay attention to school stuff. And then in two thousand twenty, COVID hits. And then we really start paying attention. And, um, then you get to this, you know, this, you have this epiphany, right? And you're like, you know, you start waking up and you're like, wait a minute, like, what, what kind of books are in these schools? And what kind of cur, curriculum is this? And what's critical race theory? And is that happening in our schools or is it not? And, you know, you start digging a little bit more and you just start understanding how the way the system works and how the education system works and how, you know, um, the whole process is kind of structured. And then you start paying attention to these local municipal elections. Because you're like, well, you start hearing these, these bigger federal national politicians talking about, it all starts at the local level. And you need to be paying attention at the local level. Because if you're not, if you're not affecting change at the local level, you'll never be able to affect change at the national level. And really, then the local level is where it really matters. Because the states are, are, they still have autonomy for the most part. And so if you, you know, you have a big influx of, of people coming into Texas, right, California.
Your seedlings start here too. You know, you got all kinds of, there's juggernauts.
Right.
At the schools that could potentially become President of the United States.
Right, exactly. And so th, there's this, this focus, like Texas is like the crown jewel for the left. Because if they can swing Texas, they pretty much have the country locked up at that point. Because California is never gonna turn red. Everyone who's red is moving out of California to Texas or to, you know, other parts of the country, Florida, some other, other areas. But there, there are also tons of folks who are blue voters that are. But there, there are also tons of folks who are blue voters that are leaving some of those areas and coming to Texas. And they just are, you know, trying to affect change here in the state of Texas. And there aren't enough people showing up to these local elections. And so how, what's your perspective on that? And how do you, what do you think we need to do to change that and flip it so that we can get more people paying attention, more like, you know, we do the podcast and we try to bring people on and we try to spread the word, you know, locally and of course nationally, but also we have the kind of the local focus around the election season for that, like four months or so, leading up to the elections. Um, and, you know, that's our contribution, right? And and you have like local PACs and you have, you know, local, um, businesses that will promote and, you know, all of these different things. You have Facebook groups and, you know, social media groups and all that. But how do we drive more focus on the importance of of local vote? What do you think about that?
You know, I wish I had the answer. I don't, I don't know that I do. I'm just a mom who ran for school board. You know, I'm not, I'm not this political person. I just saw a need and I couldn't sit by and so I stepped up and did it. Um, but I don't have the answer. I was surprised at how high the turnout was in Frisco this year. I thought it was, ended up being like 23,000 total versus my race, which was, I think, 16,000, give or take. Um, I figured it was going to be somewhere between 18 and 20 and I was clearly wrong.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna get out of the production business and throw out my crystal ball because it was wrong. But I I do think people are waking up. Again, the fact that Reed and Susan got many more votes than I got. Um, I think Susan got almost 3,000 more votes than I got. So that's a lot. So I think, I do think people are waking up. I think it's also hard to know, like, who to vote for and and a lot of folks don't vote. And to your point, turnout is, is low. Um, I think it has to affect you in some way or someone around you. Cause I hear people all the time, you know, I had no idea this was going on until this thing happened and now I know. Um.
Yeah, they don't know.
And Frisco is a huge district. Frisco ISD is the ninth largest district in Texas with 67,000 students. That is massive.
It is.
And so, you know, having 23,000 votes in a town of over 200,000 people, you know, that's, that's low, but it's high relative to some other.
Oh, it's, yeah, it's really high. Yeah.
This year, right? And so last year was a lot less. This year it was higher. So I think, you know, I'm hoping that people just sort of learn. And I have people reaching out to me, um, you know, all the time about this is going on at my school or this is going on with my kid or this is this or this is that. And, you know, they're not satisfied with the resolution. And, you know, I say, there'll be a school board election next May. You can, you can vote for change or you can vote to continue. And I never asked them.
Or you can run.
Or you can run. That's right. You can run.
Or start talking about the issues immediately, you know?
With your own community, you know, there's certain, you know, Frisco has, um, 12 high schools.
Yeah.
Which is a lot, right?
Oh, yeah.
And so, you know, each of those feeder patterns has its own set of issues, right? Because of rezoning maybe or overcrowding. Um, like my daughter's school is the most crowded middle school in all of Frisco ISD. And there's reasons for that. And I'm not, I'm not being critical when I say that because that just is what it is. But those parents are concerned about that. They're concerned about things that affect that particular feeder pattern. On the other side of town, they're focused on maybe the turnover in their school. Cause teacher retention has been an issue in many school districts, including Frisco ISD. In fact, I think it's been an issue in most districts. Um, that's one of the issues that I ran on that I still believe we can solve. Um, but we have to have the right mindset and, you know, practices in place to do that. But other, you know, I've talked to folks in other feeder patterns that they're upset that half of the teachers at the elementary school left last year. So that's what's on their mind. Um, others are concerned about the increase in fights in schools and the discipline policies and things like that. So in each of these little areas in Frisco, those families have different concerns. And so I think if those parents can kind of unite, pay attention to what's going on, share the word. I feel like people are waking up more every day. I really do. And they're understanding what's happening.
COVID did a couple of things, right? Like it allowed us to see what our kids were doing because they were at our houses, right? Learning or trying, attempting to learn in a lot of people's cases. But also it allowed people to get out in their communities and kind of talk to the people on their blocks and have conversations and develop relationships, uh, in our communities. Um, but so we can identify these issues. Now, this ad issue of teacher attrition, what, uh, what solves do you have for that to keep teachers around? You thought you could solve that?
I, um, I have an HR background, so that's what I've been doing as my career for the past 20 plus years. And one of the things that I ran on was we need to do an engagement survey. We need to ask the teachers what they're thinking. And the district did do that. I don't know what the participation was. If you don't have, you know, 70% participation, then it's really hard to trust the results. That's kind of an industry standard. Not, I don't know if education has a different standard, but in corporate America, you want at least 70 to 80% participation in order to know if the results are valid.
Send results out of my company to managers if they don't have over an 80% response rate. So so then we're like begging our employees to like, hey, make sure you, make sure you do fill out the engagement survey.
You can't give them jeans day if they're working virtually.
Yeah.
You know, what do you do?
Right.
Right. So I did, that was one of the parts of my platform and the district did do that. So we'll see those results, I think, pretty soon. They just did it in April, I believe. Um, but I think it's more comprehensive than that, that one of the issues that I have, that I've spoken about many times, is acknowledging that problems exist. And I see this not just in Frisco, but in other school districts. And quite honestly, if Frisco did this, I probably wouldn't have run for the board. I don't expect any school district or any organization to be perfect. That is unrealistic. Again, 67,000 students, we have over 9,000 employees. There are going to be issues to resolve. What troubled me the most when I was running was I didn't see anyone saying, yes, that's an issue. And yes, we know it's a problem and here's what we're gonna do to resolve it. Instead, it's like this, everything's perfect. Nothing to see here.
Yeah.
And you can't fix the problem you don't acknowledge exists. It's impossible to do that.
Acknowledge you have a problem.
Right.
It's like saying you're sorry when you don't believe you're sorry, when you don't think you need to be sorry and you didn't do anything wrong to be honest.
Like, I'm sorry you're offended, right? That's not an apology, right?
Yeah.
And so that's been my issue, not just with, with Frisco and not just when I was running, but I see that with all the school districts. It's like, everything is fantastic here. Nothing to see here. Well, that is not realistic and you can't solve anything that way. So that's been my concern. And then I'll hear stuff from teachers because they do reach out to me and, you know, in in our district, they're doing this furniture refresh and they're taking away their filing cabinets and they're giving them these desks without drawers. And it looks super cool. It looks like you work at Google, right? But like, I've had a teacher tell me I'm going to prosper because they will let me have a filing cabinet there. Okay, at the point at which a teacher is going to resign, this is a teacher who lived in Frisco, worked in Frisco for, I can't remember, 10, 15 years, something like that, and said, you're taking away my filing cabinet and my, you know, computer. Instead, it's like, it's on the wall kind of a thing. So you don't even have any privacy if you wanna send an email to someone's parent or something like that.
Your liquor bottle anywhere?
I don't think they're doing that, but I don't know. But it's like, at the point at which the teacher is going to resign because they can, you know, they have a printer in the hallway versus having to walk across campus, like whatever those things are, Frisco ISD lost over 850 teachers last year.
Yeah.
Out of 4,200 or something like that. So at the point at which teachers are leaving or something like that, like you have to stop and say, okay, what are we doing?
Yeah.
And I just don't see that. I still hear the teachers leaving.
For people to leave. Yeah. I mean, I still, if if that's what the reason is, it's a silly reason not to keep them. Cause a filing cabinet is not that expensive, you know?
Right. And I had a parent.
Enough people saying like, hey, I don't like that. If you have, if out of 850 teachers, a hundred of them are saying, hey, I'm leaving because you took away my file cabinet and my computer, then it's like, well, maybe we should bring back the filing cabinets and the computers.
I don't know if it's that many, but.
I don't know, like.
Yeah, it's like, every one matters. Every single one matters.
Yeah.
Because you're replacing them in a lot of cases. I mean, they come with experience, but a lot of times you're hiring them without experience.
Yeah.
And it takes them time to ramp up. But they are leaving for Prosper, not just because of filing cabinets. I mean, that's just one example, but I had a parent call me last week devastated because apparently, and I don't know, there could be two sides to this story. I don't know, but the teacher was, been teaching a certain grade for however many years and was told by the principal, you're now teaching X grade next year. And the teacher's like, well, then I'm leaving.
Yeah.
And, you know, maybe the teacher should be open minded because I've had a lot of teachers tell me, I didn't want to teach a new grade and then I did and I love it now. But this teacher submitted the resignation supposedly, again, I don't, there may be two sides to the story, but supposedly the teacher submitted the resignation because they didn't want to change grades. If this is a teacher that we want to retain, we need to do timeout. Fine. Keep teaching fifth grade if that's what you want. We won't make you go to kindergarten or whatever it is. Like, at some point, you gotta stop the bleeding. And it's just, it's kind of this attitude of just, well, you know, everybody has this problem and we just gotta, you know.
Muscle through it.
Yeah, it's like, well, okay, yes, everyone does have this problem, but I I probably, you know, there's probably not something we could have done to have kept all 850 teachers. But how many went to Prosper that don't live in Prosper? They live here, but they want to go to Prosper because they feel like it's better there because they're allowed to make copies on their own or have a filing cabinet or whatever it is, right? Whatever the, whatever the issue is, like, what are we doing about that? What are we doing about?
Teach fifth grade, which is what they want to teach.
Right.
I mean, true diversity is diversity in processes, uh, culture. Uh, true diversity isn't found in your melanin levels or your gender. I mean, that's where true diversity is found, right? Like how you approach things differently. That's the perspective that you're going to bestow on these young people, you know? And teach them different ways of thinking things and building new neural pla- pathways essentially. And that's what we, that's the goal, I think, right? Is have open minded children that have.
Should be.
Different ways of looking at things and figuring things out. And if you tighten this noose on these teachers so tight where all they have is a pencil drawer, you know, left, and they don't have the freedom, then may- maybe there's some people that can operate just fine like that, right? So maybe there are some teachers that can operate just fine like that, but a lot of teachers can't, you know? And that's fine. And they should be given the freedom to do that. If they, if you're really and truly want diversity in your institutions of higher learning or lower learning or whatever it is, secondary education, right? Like you need diversity of processes and culture.
Yep.
So, yeah, they need to figure that out. Clearly a problem. I love the idea of engaging the teachers. I think that's a great place to start, fantastic place to start. Figure out where you're at. Have them admit there's a problem. Also a no, a genius idea, like, you know, no brainer idea.
That one's easier said than done though, because you, because you're dealing, you're dealing with a mindset and and people don't love to change their mindset. If once they get dug, once they get dug in on, this is the way it is. This is the way it's done. This is the way it's always been. We're not changing. If the teacher wants to leave, let them leave. We'll hire somebody else.
Right. And that's what's concerning. And I, I mean, I think all you really have to do is like, what are the top three reasons, reasons teachers are leaving? Maybe it's not, maybe it's not a filing cabinet.
Yeah. And if that's the case, if it's like five people that don't want a filing, that want a filing cabinet, that's like, all right, maybe we let these five go, but there's 200.
Filing cabinet and let everyone else not have one.
Right. Or whatever, right? If they don't care, until they all start asking for a filing cabinet and then it becomes problematic, right? But.
So one other thing I wanted to ask is there's a, there's an investigation done, right? About this coffee shop, uh, conversation, right? Like in Texas Education Agency came in and did an investigation.
Yeah. So what happened was is, um, Representative Matt Shaheen, he's one of the other state reps that has a big portion of Frisco ISD in his, in his area. He requested the T E A to do an investigation and it is my understanding that the T E A is doing an investigation. I don't know the outcome of that. I don't believe it has been concluded yet, at least not that I'm aware of. I'm assuming at some point there'll be some kind of finding, but I, it is my understanding that they are investigating.
I didn't know if you heard of an ETA or.
If I had what?
Didn't know when that was coming out or if you heard anything on that, yeah.
The T E A is like government.
Several years.
Well, hopefully it won't be that long.
Yeah.
Maybe after, maybe after the legislative session is over, Matt Shaheen will call him up and get an update.
Rattle some cages.
Yeah. He's a little busy right now in Austin, but, um, but there is something going on and I'm sure we'll hear at some point.
How much time do you spend, uh, for people who are maybe thinking about running for school board? And you have a full time gig. How much time do you spend a week, do you think, dealing with school board related, uh, ISD items?
20 plus hours most weeks.
Wow.
Cause it's preparing, it's answering emails, it's talking to people on the phone. It's, you know, my last board meeting that we had, I walked in the building at 4:30 PM and didn't walk out till after 10:30 PM. I had a few meetings before the actual board meeting and so, and then there's all these events too, which, um, you know, I go to the ones I can. People like to attack me on Facebook if I didn't show up to a ribbon cutting or this event or that event. Well, I have a full time job and I sometimes travel for my job and I'm also a mom.
Yeah.
And, you know, so I can't go to every event. I go to the ones that I can go to.
People are very unreasonable.
Yeah.
Generally.
Well, and I honestly, I didn't run to do this to go to events. I mean, events are important. Like I went to the Teacher of the Year banquet. That was a fantastic event. There were some other service related events, but those were in the evening.
Yeah.
You know, on weeknights. And so I was able to go, but like a lot of the luncheons that are, you know, two hours in the middle of the day, I just, it's hard for me to do that because I do have to take time away from work for board meetings. And sometimes we have them at 10:00 in the morning and sometimes I'll have a committee meeting at 2:00 in the afternoon that I have to go to the district office for. And I'm not, I'm not complaining. It just is what it is.
Yeah.
But I do have a full time job. I don't think any of the other trustees, except for one, have an employer. They're all self-employed, which that's great, but I'm not. And I have, yeah, I have a pretty flexible schedule and my boss is amazing and he's very supportive of me doing this. Um, but, you know.
You have obligations.
I have obligations to my employer. And sometimes if there's something on a Thursday night, but my daughter's in a play, I gotta go see my daughter in the play, right? And so, um, you know, I've learned to just kind of tune out the criticism. Um, if it's fair and people want to reach out to me about something I've said and done, I'm happy to answer. But the, the people that just spew hate on Facebook about where I am or I'm not. In fact, it was interesting because someone just reached out to me.
They call those people trolls.
That six, yeah, they do. That six hour board meeting, I was in the building for six and a half hours, something like that. And I got home and someone had messaged me, this very reasonable guy who's, who sees both sides to everything. He actually messaged me. He's like, people are saying that you didn't show up to the meeting and it was two days after the election. So he said, people are saying you didn't show up to the meeting and they're speculating that you're not there because you're too upset to show up to the meeting because you're upset that the candidates that you supported lost. He's like, I just want to ask you, like, if you did do that, that's cool. You can tell me. Um, like, I get it. It was probably tough for you. And I said, I don't know what to tell you, but I was there and these meetings are recorded and people, I guess, were saying that I wasn't there.
Yeah.
It's like, that's provably false because the meetings are recorded and public and you can either see my empty seat or you can see me sitting in the seat.
Well, the rumor mill never stops.
Yeah.
No. Troll is gonna troll.
Just keep going. Well, we thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule.
Yes.
As a mother and a trustee and an employee.
Thank you.
You know, to come have a visit with us.
Happy to do it.
Really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I'm glad we were able to work it out.
Definitely.
This is fun. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you listening?
All right, dudes and dudettes, that's a wrap for this episode of Dudes Talking Freedom. Special thanks to Stephanie Elad for joining us in studio. It's been a pleasure having you with us. For DTF, this is Jeremy.
And Luke.
And we'll see you next time.